Okay, let's please rise for the Star Spangled Banner. Well, I don't see him. Okay, so we have, we're down to 13 articles. Nothing really looks totally controversial, so maybe we can get out. Any town meeting members who have yet to be sworn in? Seeing none. Any announcements? Oh, wait, I recognize the chair of the Board of Select Board, Ms. Mahan. Then you can do your announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Diane Mahan, Select Board Chair. It is moved that if all the business of the meeting is set forth and the warrant for the annual town meeting is not disposed of at this session, when the meeting adjourns, it adjourns to Monday, May 20, 2019, at 8:00 p.m.
All in favor, please say yes. Opposed? [Laughter] Okay, then we're going to stay until we're done. All right, announcements. Mr. Berkowitz next, then. No, wait, Bill, let Paul do his.
Brief announcement, just wishing a happy birthday to Alan Tosti.
Oh.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Bill. Happy Birthday to you. Woo!
Hi, Bill Berkowitz, Precinct 8. On my way out of here Monday night, as we were leaving the meeting, I found myself talking to another longtime town meeting member. We were both commenting about how good a town meeting this was. I have been fortunate to be here for a number of years now, and for me, this was one of the best town meetings that I have ever attended. If we don't finish tonight, I might change my mind. Perhaps the stage was set by the precinct meetings that happened before the meeting, led by different precinct leaders and helped by Envision Arlington, but the meeting itself, I was really struck by the quality of it. We took up controversial and challenging issues. The quality of the debate, I thought, was particularly thoughtful. The speakers were well-prepared, many folks did their homework, was passionate at times, but it was almost always respectful, and that's a winning combination for me. I was enormously impressed by the quality of this town meeting, and I was educated as well. It's just the way, for me, that local government ought to operate. That form of government is wonderful as well as it is. I hope that all of this carries over into future meetings, but I did want to say that I felt privileged to be part of this one. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Stuart Iketa, Precinct 6, and here for the Arlington Commission on Arts and Culture. That's the new umbrella organization for townwide arts and culture activities, formally authorized by this body last year. I'm pleased to announce the launch of Live Arts Arlington. It's an exciting new initiative of our new Programs and Festivals Subcommittee. Live Arts Arlington is a series of free, family-friendly pop-up performances and public art activities in a variety of expressive forms, from music, puppetry and portraiture, to dance, crafts demos, and literary readings. These will take place in public plazas and parks and some more unusual art spaces around town throughout May and June. After this week's successful kickoff by noted jazz duo Scott Samenfeld and Eric Van Damme, the series will continue this Saturday with Arabian-Egyptian-style dancer Said Sultan and guitarist Ethan Kozalka. Then, on June 8, Chamber Business of the Year awardee Arlington Global Service Station kicks off the new Garage Band series, a high-octane, see what I did there, concert series featuring School of Honk and The Bittersweet Band, and that's just the start of a great summer. A complete summer calendar of free Live Arts Arlington events will be released on the new townwide arts portal and cultural calendar website, artsarlington.org/livearts. Artsarlington.org, if you haven't seen it yet, go there, you'll find so much going on in our town to be excited and proud of in arts and culture. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Clicker test. Oh, you have an announcement?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Gordon Jameson, Precinct 12. I just want to have us all thank Josh LaBelle for giving us buttons for yet another year.
All right, get your clickers out. And I want to reinforce that you should look at your clicker and make sure that your votes registered. I got a note from a town meeting member that he wasn't sure if his votes were all registered, so look, and it'll tell you yes or no. And if it's not, let Tim know, and he'll fix it. So the question, which country has the oldest and most continuously-used national flag? One, Japan? Two, Denmark? Or three, the U.S.? Hey, that's not how it's written down here. All right, so let's go with what Tim has. One, America? Two, Denmark? And three, Japan? You did that to fool me. Denmark. Are there any reports or committees? Any reports or committees? Seeing none. This is an old one. We are now going to take up Articles 47. Articles 47 and 48 have to do with ACMI, Community Access Television Station, so I'm going to step down on these two. I don't have any financial interest in them, but I've been the president of the Board of ACMI and Allen's Board for, I don't even know, 15, 20 years, so I think out of an abundance of caution, I'm going to step down and let our assistant moderator run the show here. I really don't really have to, but I'm gonna, how would I anyway? So Jim, you're up. 47, Selectmen, 48 is FinCom.
Article 47 is before us, and we have the Board of Selectmen or the Town Manager to
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. As the moderator mentioned, Articles 47 and 48 are companion articles. As the body likely is aware, we receive payments from the three cable companies in town every year to support the PEG access, the public education and government channels that are operated by ACMI. We've received those funds for many, many years, and they've been, via contract and via agreement, moved directly to ACMI for expenditure. However, over the past several years, the state has started to push forward regulations requiring these funds to be appropriated by town meeting. So what Article 47 is requesting is the establishment of a special revenue fund, known as the PEG Access and Cable-related Fund, to serve as the place where these monies will go into and then be expended out of, and then we can certainly, the FinCom can talk about Article 48, but that's the actual appropriation of operating and capital expenses for ACMI, as they, again, have used every year for their budget, but now these funds are to run through town meeting per state regulation. Thank you.
John Marr, Precinct 14. I speak to you tonight as chair of the Select Board Statutorily Mandated Cable Advisory Committee. Permit me to recognize my colleagues on that committee, Joseph Wies, Dr. Michael Quinn, and David Good. The latter two also serve as town meeting members. David and Mike, please stand, be recognized. We support the Select Board's recommended vote under Article 47. We are all, I hope, keenly aware of the tremendous community asset that ACMI is for the town of Arlington under the superb direction of Norm MacLeod. Time does not permit a recitation of the many quality programs it provides. However, this very town meeting is being broadcast through the auspices of ACMI. Public asset access entities require money to run. Federal regulation and laws enacted since the early 1970s have created a system in which cable companies have to negotiate franchise fees, as Adam has indicated, with cities and towns for the privilege of laying their cables on public streets. The maximum annual franchise fee was codified in Federal Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984 to quote, "For any 12-month period, the franchise fees paid by a cable operator with respect to any cable system shall not exceed 5% of such cable operators' gross revenues derived in such period for the operation of the cable system to provide cable services." Arlington has, as indicated, three cable companies that provide service, and they are Comcast, RCN, and Verizon. The 5% contribution for these companies equal about $800,000. This represents 98% of ACMI budget. Article 47 deals with the accounting mechanism by which town meeting gains control over the appropriation of these funds for PEG access. This is a good thing. However, I want to briefly discuss what the future might hold for the amount of money that will be subject to appropriation. Under the law, local governments can also negotiate other things, including what are called cable-related in-kind contributions, like capital expenses for studio facilities and broadcasting equipment. Another important concession the cable companies have to provide local governments is the channels that the stations broadcast on. This helps the stations' bottom line by relieving them of the cost of leasing these channels. Together, the franchise fees, the in-kind contributions provide most of these stations' annual operating budget and physical plan, and the free cable channels help keep costs low. Unfortunately, since the original federal communications rules mandating the establishment of such stations in many municipalities, the cable industry has been trying to eliminate PEG access channels in the interest of making even vaster profits than they already gouged from consumers. First, by legal challenges culminating in the 1979 Supreme Court decision of FCC versus Midwest Video Corp., that struck down the earlier cable access rules and directly resulted in the 1984 Cable Act on a so-called compromise between community media stations and the cable industry. And later, by successfully lobbying campaigns to give states, rather than cities and towns, the sole power to negotiate franchise fees for their cities and towns in the interest of, again, efficiency, reed worse deals than many of those municipalities have been negotiating on their own, which is how the system currently works in many states, though not happily in Massachusetts. Cities and towns in Massachusetts, at least for now, maintain this right. Cable companies, however, pushing to remove the right for cities and towns, and legislation has been filed to this effect. Meanwhile, the cable industry continues to do its level best to shrink the number of community media stations with all kinds of crafty business and policy tricks. For example, Comcast's practice of refusing to list the schedule of community media stations in its program guide, which drastically reduces the local audience for each station, makes it easier for the cable giant to make the case to get rid of the legal mandate to fund those stations through the franchise fee. The cable companies claim their savings are necessary to offset their loss of customers due to many abandoned cable in favor of less expensive online streaming services. Notwithstanding the supposed losses, cable companies' profits are at all-time highs. Now FCC Chairman Ajit Pai, a former lobbyist who is the living embodiment of regulatory capture, which is the control of government regulatory agents by the very industry is supposed to regulate, is moving in for the kill. Fresh off his successful assault on net neutrality, another anti-democratic communication move that virtually no one supported, except the cable and telecom industries. Under Pai's watch, the four commissioners have released an official document snappily entitled "The Second Further Notice of Proposed Rulemaking." If the FCC annexes regulations, cities and towns will no longer be able to negotiate the 5% franchise fee plus the aforementioned cable-related in-kind contributions like studios and other necessary infrastructure for community media stations. Instead, these governments will be forced to allow cable companies, who in their sole discretion assign a fair market value to the channels it provides, community stations, and deduct that amount from the franchise fees that keep them going. The companies will also be allowed to catalog a wide variety of cable-related in-kind contributions to cities and towns and deduct those from the fees, too. Cities and towns often have important civic buildings, like schools and fire stations, connected with cables and equipment provided by the companies that have been used for a variety of important services, including emergency services, for decades. Our town has this equipment. Taking those costs off the top of the franchise fees will be significant indeed. In practice, community media advocates are saying that this regulation will quickly result in a loss of significant portion of our annual revenue for the entire sector, which will cause many stations to drastically reduce their services or cease operations entirely. Many in the cable industry assume that this reprehensible rule will be enacted. Licensing authorities across the country will no doubt bring litigation seeking to have this rule invalidated. However, given the deference of courts to administrative agency enactments, the ultimate outcome is in doubt. I am pleased to advise that your Select Board has entered the fray by sending a strong letter to the FCC opposing this rule during the public comment period. The very viability of stations like ACMI is in jeopardy, and we should all be aware
Does anyone else wish to speak? Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote, Tim? Want to vote yes, press 1. It's an affirmative vote, 183 to 1, and I so declare it. Article 48 is now before you. It's an article pertaining to the financial budget for ACMI, and it's a FinCom vote. Mr. Tosti, do you want to address the article? Does anyone else wish to address the article? Okay, I guess we're ready for a vote. Boy, if all our articles could go this fast, we'd be finished at 8:45. If you wish to vote yes, press 1. Vote is 178 to 1. It's an affirmative vote, and I so declare it. Thank you, Jim. Point of information, John, do you think you can...
Yes, sir.
...put as quickly on the other articles?
That's up to you guys. That closes Article 48. That brings us now to Article 51. Ms. Mahan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Diane Mahan, Chair, Select Board. Just very briefly, I do want to recognize the CDBG Subcommittee members, as well as this is the first year we had three citizens added to the committee, and I have to say in all the years, honestly, that I've served on CDBG, this was the most expeditious CDBG process I'd ever been through. The three citizen community members were, obviously, had done a lot of homework, had sent out emails, had conversations with some of the providers and their proposals, as well as really knew every single proposal inside and out, and I was really impressed with that because they went beyond due diligence. So the CDBG Subcommittee, besides myself and my colleague, Mr. Dan Dunn, Town Manager, Mr. Adam Chapdeline, Planning Director, Ms. Jenny Raitt, and CDBG Administrator, Ms. Julie Wayman, who really kept us going, she was sort of the springboard that let us, I'm using all these cliches, hit the ground running and really do a lot of good work, but the three community members, who were invaluable, were Ms. Sara Lee, Mr. Christopher Potter, and Ms. Tony Sacco. So I really look forward to working with them in the future. And just very briefly, I believe it was provided online, this year's CDBG application. We anticipated receiving 1.1 million approximately, which is a reduction of approximately $11,100. And the allocations that we received did go over the total anticipated amount of $1.3 million, because there are programs put in place with CDBG that do generate revenues, as well as we do a six-month review for any unexpended funds where we could have them go somewhere else. And I'm happy to say, of all the applications that were submitted, all but one was funded, sometimes not to the maximum amount that they requested. And the one that we did not fund, I want to say, it wasn't just a one-year decision, it sort of was following an established trend by the previous CDBG Subcommittee members, of which Mr. Dunn and Ms. Rowe were the representatives from the board, so I was able to step in this year and be aware of that. So that wasn't done lightly. When we don't fund a program, there's definitely a reason, a trend, and some rationale. So I look forward to any questions and hopefully your endorsement. Thank you.
Anyone wish to address the article? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the CDBG, as proposed by the Board of Selectmen, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's unanimous vote, 175 to 0. That closes Article 51. Brings us to Article 52. Yes, Article 52.
Thank you, Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager. Article 52 is an article that reauthorizes the spending amounts for various revolving funds that the town maintains. Those revolving funds were established under new state law at the 2017 Annual Town Meeting. What you were voting on is an authorization amount for spending. I would also note that at the very back of the Select Board report is a new report that is in the report this year for the first time, showing some of the detail, a little bit more line item detail of expenditures from our existing revolving funds. The way a revolving fund works is you set up a spending limit, the fund takes in various fees and payments, and the spending, total spending can be up to the total amount that you authorize. There had been a correction, which was put out on the back table. The Select Board had to revote some of the numbers this year. Those were corrected and put out in the back table, also sent to the town meeting members' list, and are available on the interactive agenda, too. And if there are questions about the funds, I would encourage you to call me in my office, or you could ask me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone wish to address revolving funds?
Christian Klein, Precinct 10. Just a quick question on the life support services fees. Originally, when this was issued, the expenditures were not to exceed $800,000 in a calendar year, and the actual expenditures were $837,000, and then it was reissued with expenditures not to exceed $1 million. I'm curious what the number was that we approved last year and whether that number was overtaken.
Do you have that answer, Mr. Poole?
Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager. It was 800.
So if we vote that we're not going to exceed $800,000, and then we do, is there any repercussions for that?
Probably what will happen, the worst thing that would happen is the Department of Revenue will yell at us. Then, this year, because of that issue, we did ask for an increase to 1 million, and the reason it went over, by the way, is because we bought an ambulance. In the past, we had borrowed for ambulance purchases, and so the amount coming out of the ambulance fund toward those ambulances was spread out over several years, but we decided to try to avoid the interest costs and just pay cash, and so that's what happened.
Great. As long as we don't get in trouble, I'm glad with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Poole. Any other questions?
Peter Fiore, Precinct 2. I don't do much better than just balancing my checkbook, but under white goods recycling fees, and maybe I missed this, that ending balance doesn't look right.
Sorry, I didn't get the question. Mr. Poole, do you understand the question?
Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager. One of the corrections that happened during the revote and that's contained in this sheet is that some of the math on the original sheet was wrong, and so I believe if you, the previous speaker, I don't know if you were looking at what was originally in the Select Board report or these sheets here, but I believe that these sheets are now correct. They have been double and triple-checked.
Thank you. Mr. Memmon? Ms. Maman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Zarina Mohn, Precinct 21. I just have a couple of quick questions. I was wondering, and maybe we answered this in the past, and I just can't get in my head yet, is the private way repairs is exceeding the public way repairs? And is this a compensation with the private way also? I mean, it just seems like we're spending a lot more money on private way repairs.
Mr. Poole?
Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager. The private way repairs account is the account through which betterments run. In other words, when we repair a private way and assess a betterment to the residents, the money then flows through this. So, the other, the public way repair is relatively much, it's a fraction of what we do for repairing public ways. There's a lot more public way repair. But the private way repairs specifically for those betterments.
Okay. And you said that we get reimbursed for that from the private ways? Did I just hear that, or no?
Yeah, we make an assessment based on the cost of the work.
They, the town doesn't pay for the private way?
Right, right. That's what, just for explication, a betterment is where you basically put a surcharge on people's taxes, their property taxes to pay for.
Thank you. And one other question, I have noticed that two of the committees have no spending. I was wondering, I think we dissolved one of the committees, and then the rentals, the cemetery chapel rentals, that has zero balance and zero expenditures and so forth. So, I was wondering, are they on this for a reason? Or is there a way to remove them? Or maybe I'm overstepping this?
I think they're on there because they've been there in the past, and I believe, I don't personally know much about the cemetery rental, chapel rentals, other than to say that if such activity were to occur in the coming year, if somebody were to rent that chapel for a family funeral or something, then there would need to be a place to put the money in case that happened. So, it just means that in the last year, or FY '18, no activity like that happened.
And, Mr. Moderator, is Uncle Sam Committee still existing? I'm just curious. I thought we dissolved that.
It's in existence, but I think it needs members.
Okay. Just wanted to check in. I used to be a member of that, but it was too few members, and we didn't really get much done. Anyways, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address revolving funds? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of revolving funds provided by the Board of Selectmen, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. It's unanimous vote, 189 positive to 0. That closes Article 52, and brings us to Article 53, endorsement of parking benefits district expenditures. Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Articles 53 and 54 have been consolidated into one vote under Article 53. And what we're asking the town meeting to do is approve the expenditures to operate the parking, basically, the parking district in Arlington Center, as well as approve the expenditures for the parking benefit district, which are improvements to the center. So, you can see in the Finance Committee report what our projected revenue is for 2020. We're offsetting the parking budget, which is managed by the Treasurer's Office, a portion that is related to parking. We're offsetting the parking enforcement budget. Those are the actual parking control officers for their time working in Arlington Center within the parking benefit area. And then, we're also paying directly for parking meter operations. Those are credit card charges, the lease we pay for the meters, and other expenses associated with managing the district. And then, finally, we're asking from 2020 funds to put $150,000 towards sidewalk improvements in the center and improvements to Broadway Plaza, as well as asking to put $36,500 from previously approved expenditures or projects from the parking benefits district to also put towards those sidewalk and plaza improvements, adding up to $186,500 to put towards replacing sidewalks in Arlington Center. We are currently, we've hired, we've hired a consultant or designer to put together the specs for replacing the sidewalks from Pond Lane up through the intersection of Mass, Mystic, and Pleasant. And we would hope, via this funding and via funding existing within the capital plan, to be able to start such work in the fall if this budget is approved. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Leonard, Precinct 17. Mr. Chapdeline just answered part of my question. Leftover from last fiscal year, 2018, is the $36,500, I believe he said, will be used to help with the sidewalks and stuff. But if we look at the expenditures for 2020 to meter revenue, that also comes up with a balance left over, if I add this right, of $35,388. Is somebody going to tell me where that $35,388 is going to go? Or are we going to carry it into next year?
Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. What you just suggested is correct. If we do collect that $450,000 in revenue that we are projecting, and expend the $414,000 that we're asking for approval for, any surplus will carry forward in the fund, and we'd have to come back to town meeting for us, for approval to spend it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Mr. Fisher? Mr. Warden?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. John Warden, Precinct 8. The manager mentioned something about replacing sidewalks or fixing sidewalks in Arlington Center. Can I ask, well, what's the matter with the sidewalks? And what are you going to do with them?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Frankly, the sidewalks in Arlington Center are in deplorable condition, and they pose a danger, really, to those mobile and those not so mobile. And they need to be replaced. And when we went through a process, I believe, three years ago now, we had looked at replacing them with a concrete walking path with a brick trim to maintain the character of Arlington Center. We are just starting the design process now, but I would imagine we would be at least starting the discussion with concrete walking paths with brick trim. We'll have public dialogues about that before any decisions are made. But I know, certainly speaking for myself, and I believe for the Select Board, we think it's important to prioritize accessibility in the center.
Thank you for the explanation, but not for the answer. The, I know there's a big prejudice against bricks among town management. And, but if you think of, one of the things that makes Lexington Center an attractive place to shop, and a much more vibrant place than we have, is they have brick sidewalks. And I work in downtown Boston, and downtown Boston has a lot of brick sidewalks around in the financial district and in other parts. In fact, in Beacon Hill, they just reached an agreement with the city that even the slopes that go down from the sidewalk to the crosswalk are going to be brick with iron grates instead of those bright yellow bumpy things that we have here. So, I suppose the ship has already sailed, and you're determined to get rid of the bricks. But I think it's unfortunate, and I think it's, when those sidewalks were, to some extent restored, and then, to some extent placed, it really made the center a much more interesting and vibrant place, in my opinion. And then, of course, unfortunately, they're slathered over in many places with blacktop, because the town seems to have an inability to replace bricks. All they can do is lay blacktop. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Teshler?
Michelle Durocher, Precinct 19.
Oh, damn, I got it wrong. Sorry. Get you guys mixed up.
I had a question about the scope of the parking benefit district, the funding pool, essentially. What type of expenditures would be valid for that particular funding pool?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Generally, for maintenance, infrastructure improvements, or beautification, or the benefit of the parking district. So, we are looking at, as the Parking Implementation and Governance Committee, we have two sets of priorities. One is infrastructure improvements, and we focused on sidewalks and other improvements to Broadway Plaza. And then, operating improvements, sidewalk cleaning, snow removal in the center. We're still finding the right way to contract out for sidewalk cleaning. We did start enhanced snow removal this year, breaking open holes between the meters. So, we're generally allowed to invest in the infrastructure or operation of the parking district.
Okay, thank you. One of the things you mentioned was particularly the area I hoped was a valid expenditure was snow removal. Members of my precinct complained to me last year that the snowbanks were so high, they couldn't feed the meters, and they subsequently got tickets, or they couldn't navigate them. And so, that's great to hear. Just one quick comment to Mr. Warden's point. In the part of Boston near the convention center, I believe, Fort Point is the neighborhood type name, there are sort of faux-brick sidewalks there. They're incredibly smooth, but they have a very nice brick look to them. It might be a compromise. I don't know if it's too expensive, but something to consider.
Thank you. Ms. Butler?
Deborah Butler, Precinct 19, with a hot-off-the-brick story. Today, I was fortunate to get the one handicap spot in front of Town Hall. I do have two hip replacements and a knee replacement, stenosis and spondylitis. It doesn't keep me from working and getting about, but it does mean I have to be more careful. And so, I left my bag of town meeting things in the passenger seat, walked around the car, opened the door, got out my things, and then the door wouldn't close. A brick had popped up. So, I took my ice scraper, dug it out, and because I determined there was no mortar, nothing holding it in place, and that it was higher than all the surrounding bricks. And I took a good look at the area in order to do that, and realized there was no mortaring, no adhesive, and no understructure under the brick whatsoever. And I just was close enough to being late that I didn't want to try moving my car and guessing where I would have to put it so that I would be able to open the door. And I reported it to Adam Chapdeline, and he said, "Oh, when those bricks were laid 50 or 60 years ago, they just plopped them into sand." There is no understructure. There is no mortaring. And one of the worst areas in town, it's a downright embarrassment, is right in front of Town Hall. The bricks are uneven. There are puddles that go up over your shoes if you try and do business here. And it's not safe. I realize that there can be a fondness for the look and feel of uneven bricks popped into sand with no underlayer, no mortising, and never being rolled down to be made even. But as a handicap access, they're a liability suit waiting to happen. They limit what I can do. And in dim light, it is really, really slow-going to determine where you can safely put your foot and how high you have to put it up. If we're going to have bricks, plopping them in sand with no foundation and no mortaring is not the way to do it. And there are, as the previous speaker said, forms of sidewalk where the sidewalk is textured to have the look and feel of brick, but is, in fact, larger units that don't frost heave and move about. There are several areas in town where you cannot use a walker, you cannot use a wheelchair, because the brick is in such poor repair, and it has frost heaved with such incredible creativity. And it just happens that I had one of my most creative encounters with a rogue brick tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Melocheck?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Beth Melocheck, Precinct 9. If there is an ADA-compliant brick method, you might look at Cambridge Common. I was there checking out benches. I also like their benches. But it's pretty level, so if that is a technique, that would be amenable. I have questions about Broadway Plaza. Redoing the sidewalks at Broadway Plaza, does that include the Veterans Memorial Park?
Ms. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. Yes, the sidewalks that we are looking at do form that triangle around Veterans Memorial Park.
So, at what point would, you said there would be other opportunities for the public to participate in that dialogue and decision-making? When would that be?
We haven't scheduled any meetings yet, but sometime over the course, likely over the next two months.
Do you foresee that that would include moving any of the Veterans Memorial monuments? That's my concern, as well as the very healthy and beautiful and tall evergreen trees that flank the World War II monument?
So, the project discussed under this article is strictly talking about the sidewalks, nothing regarding the Veterans Memorials. However, separately, the Veterans Council has been, excuse me, begun discussions about considering an alternative location for the Veterans Memorials in town, in Cooks Hollow. It's just a concept at this point that we'd have to bring back before this body in the future, but it's not part of what's being proposed under this article.
Thank you. I would like to be, I'd like to be informed about those conversations. I happen to feel very strongly that the Veterans Memorial should be right under our eyes, whether we're walking by or driving by, en masse avec. Thank you.
Oh, wait. I get to hold this up.
Mr. Helmuth?
That was from Bob Tossey.
Eric Helmuth, Precinct 12. I moved the question.
Motion to terminate debate. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Debate is terminated. We now have a force recommended vote in the FinCom report. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 185, the affirmative, 3 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 53, and brings us to Article 54. That's a no-action vote. All in favor of no action, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's an unanimous vote for no action, and I so declare it. That brings us to Article 56. Mr. Poole?
Sandy Poole, Deputy Town Manager. This article is for settlement of a collective bargaining agreement between the town and the Arlington Ranking Officers Association. These are the sergeants, lieutenants, and captains in the police department. As with all of our other collective bargaining agreements that have brought- As with all of our other collective bargaining agreements that have been brought forward to town meeting to date, it follows a general pattern that we've established with all our other unions, plus certain other tweaks. That general pattern is a COLA, or Cost of Living Adjustment, of 2% for FY '19, 2% for FY '20, and 1% for FY '21. There's a new step system for these officers. They used to have three steps every five years. Now they have five steps every three years. We've increased their longevity payments lately, and we've included payment for Easter as a paid holiday for this unit. They used to have the option of taking comp time for Easter, but we have included Easter as a paid holiday, so it makes them the same as the patrol officers. With this settlement, the only unsettled contract with the town now is with the patrol Those negotiations were held in abeyance while the negotiations happened with the Ranking Officers Association. Karen Malloy, our Human Resources Director, and I conduct these negotiations, and we will start up the negotiations with the patrol unit soon. I think this is a good settlement, and it avoided us having to go to arbitration with this group, and I urge your support. Thank you very much.
Mr. Tossie?
Al Tossie, FinCom. I need to substitute the new motion of the Finance Committee for the Ranking Officers Association contract that Mr. Poehler just described. This was emailed to all town meeting members on Friday, last Friday, and we had a single copy that was at the back of the hallway, which I mentioned last Monday. The Finance Committee unanimously supports the new contract, which lays out what Mr. Poehler said about the ranking officers, and then also sets aside money for the ranking officers for '19 and for '20, and then sets aside a certain amount of money that can only be voted by this town meeting for a future contract settlement. So the Finance Committee unanimously recommends the substitute motion with the ranking officers contract. Thank you.
Is this, just so I'm clear, is your substitute motion substituting the entire motion, or is it just amending it to add ranking officers?
The substitute's the entire motion.
Okay. Ms. Weinstein?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jordan Weinstein, Precinct 21. Could somebody just go through what the, either the existing or the average wages are annually for the ranking officers on our police force? And what they would become under this new contract?
Mr. Poehler's going to give us an explanation.
Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager. It's a little complicated, but I will say that there is a base pay for a sergeant that starts at $70,910, $70,901 per year. For a lieutenant, the base pay is about $84,000 per year. And for a captain, it's $99,113. In addition, they get various stipends and differentials, most particularly education credits, what used to be known as the Quinn Bill. Those vary from 10% to 15% to 25% of their base salary, and various differentials. In total, if you take all their compensation together as a base, they range from a low of about $89,000 for the lowest-paid sergeant. Lieutenants are somewhere between $111,000 and $120,000, and captains are between $125,000 and $130,000. Each of those would, as I said, go up 2% in the first year, 2% in the second year, and 1% in the third year. In addition, the new step system, each step is worth 1% of the base salary. So depending on how many years of service somebody has within the unit, in other words, how many years they were a ranking officer, they may be eligible for steps. A lot of the officers have maxed out on their steps, so in the next three years, some will be getting them, and then they will max out again.
Thank you. Anyone else, anyone else we should discuss collective bargaining? Oh, Mr. Moore?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christopher Moore, Precinct 14. On the screen and on the paper that's on the website, it says the 2% wage increase is effective July 1, 2018. Is that supposed to be '19? Okay, so this is retroactive. Thank you.
Anyone else? Beth Friedman?
Beth Ann Friedman, Precinct 15. Just a general point of information. When you negotiate these contracts, how long of a period do you negotiate for? I mean, is it typically a three-year contract, a five-year contract? It sounds like this is a three-year contract.
Mr. Poehler?
Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager. This is a three-year contract. All of our collective bargaining agreements are a maximum of three years.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else we should discuss collective bargaining? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. First, we're going to vote on the substitute motion of the FinCom. We'll take that vote as a voice vote, then we'll have the regular vote with a clicker. All in favor of the substitute motion of the FinCom, if Mr. Tossie went over, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? It's unanimous vote for the substitution. As soon as Mr. Lathwood's ready, we'll vote on the recommended vote as substituted. If you're in favor of the recommended vote as substituted, please press 1 for yes. 189 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. It's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That closes Article 56, brings us to Article 60, Appropriation, Transportation, Infrastructure Fund. Does anyone wish to discuss that? Mr. Chapdeline?
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. So starting this year, based on new state law, all TNC, transportation network companies such as Uber and Lyft, are assessed a 20 cent per ride fee based on their origination, and 10 cents or 50% of that goes to the state for transportation infrastructure funding. And then another dime from that 20 cents goes to the local government where the ride originated. So for last year, Arlington received $25,813.30 from those rides originating in Arlington. Then, is that well? But by comparison, Boston received $3 million, Cambridge received almost $700,000, so. And we're able to use those funds directly for improvements to basically our transportation system. What we're recommending is appropriating that exact sum of money to put towards the permanent implementation of Bus Rapid Transit that we piloted last year in East Arlington. We're still finalizing the design of the on-road paint that we'd like to implement for Bus Rapid Transit. We're not exactly sure what the final amount will be. We're committing, would like to commit this amount to it. Any amount over that, based on the amount of paint we'll be putting on the ground, the MBTA is committed to funding the difference. So we'd ask for your favorable support for this tonight. Thank you.
Anyone wish to discuss the article? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor of the article as recommended, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 188 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. It's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 60, brings us to Article 64, Appropriations Committees and Commissions. Someone took it off the consent agenda. Ma'am?
Sophie Miatzo, Precinct 8. Just very quickly, I was surprised when I noted on page 18 of the report that there was an 8 to 7 vote on a certain amount, and I was looking for more clarification, Mr. Moderator, on what the objection was to this particular request, and whether it was something specific or just general. And then a second question regarding the Commission on Disability of $25,000, and I guess more generally, I guess originally I wasn't aware that committees had such funds to spend, and I was curious if there's just a brief explanation to what committees spend, and if there's any oversight to spending by committees. Thank you.
Mr. Tossie?
On the first question, on the 8 to 7 vote, the use of public money for arts, especially public art, started several years ago. Started with like $5,000, and then the next year it was $15,000, and then the next year. And I think the Finance Committee wanted to encourage a process, wanted to encourage something that benefited us, yet on the other hand, recognized that public arts and culture is not a core mission of the town of Arlington. Core mission of the town of Arlington is the health and safety, the education of our children. And therefore, there was a limit into how much money that we could put into this. We came up, last year we appropriated $40,000. We went back and forth on whether to make sure that the arts culture was aware that this was seed money, that they needed to start raising some of their own money for this purpose. There was a limit to how much the public entity could contribute to that. And so basically, you had a vote where about eight people wanted to go with the $35,000, seven people wanted to go with the message, but leave it at the $40,000, and that was, I think, one or two would have supported it anyway, but that was the 8 to 7 vote. But I think the clear message for the Finance Committee was this was seed money to get the process going, so the Arts and Culture Council could, besides using public money, raise some of their own money to help fund this. That the arts and culture was an area that was, could be very much in tune with the raising of private funds to support public arts. The other question, I believe, was on the Commission on Disability? Okay. In the past, the Commission on Disability, I think a budget was about $3,000. You'll notice in the Selectmen's Report, and in the Finance Committee Report, was an article to set up a special fund where monies would be taken from parking tickets and right into this fund and spent without appropriation. The Finance Committee saw that as an end run around the town meeting. In other words, the money would just go directly to them, and they could spend it however they wanted. We think that all public funds should go through the town meeting and be subject to your review. So we voted no action, recommended no action on that article, and said if you want additional funds, it should come through this article and go be passed by town meeting. This year, the Commission on Disability is being more active, and I didn't bring a complete breakdown, is trying to be more active on sidewalks, roads, mobility issues, bricks, in other areas, which are really a problem for handicapped people. And I realized this myself as a lay minister in my church, that I was taking care of a woman in a disability in a wheelchair, and all of a sudden I was helping her to get around Arlington Center, and I realized how difficult this really can be. A lot of those curb cuts are really much steeper than you really think of when you're just walking past them. So the Finance Committee voted to support the Commission on Disability and the increase. Now, most of the work, actual physical labor, is probably going to be done through public works, grant monies, things like that, but a lot of the planning for it, the coordination, hiring consultants to develop this, will be done through this article, and so that was the reason for the increase. Thank you.
Ms. LeCort?
Annie LeCort, Precinct 15, and member of the Finance Committee. I just wanted to mention that as part of our move to push the Commission on Arts and Culture a little bit on their budget, we also appointed a Finance Committee liaison to help them with their thinking about expenditures, budgets, and fundraising, and that liaison is me, so.
Thank you. Mr. Yantar?
Tim Arcaya-Yantar, Precinct 7. Mr. Moderator, I move to end debate on Article 64 and all matters before it.
Motion to terminate debate, it's been seconded. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? Unanimous vote to terminate debate. Tim? As soon as we're ready, we'll take a vote. All in favor, please press 1 for the recommended vote of the Finance Committee. It's printed in their report. Press 2 if you're opposed. 187 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 64. We now have Article 65, Appropriation, Town Celebrations and Events. Ma'am?
Sophie Miatzo, Precinct 8. I rise to seek clarification regarding the Town Day Funds, and specifically the organization of Town Night. When the same article was before last year's town meeting, I was under the mistaken impression that Town Night wasn't listed because Town Night fell under the Town Day Committee, as in previous years, and therefore was covered to the extent necessary by the appropriation to Town Day. Unfortunately, I and others were unaware that the Town Day Committee had reported to the Select Board well before last year's town meeting that it would no longer support Town Night, effectively canceling Town Night unless others proactively stepped forward. At the time of last year's town meeting, nobody had yet stepped up to organize Town Night, and we were not told this when voting on appropriations for town events. Thankfully, residents woke up to the cancellation in August, when Town Night was not advertised along Town Day. A GoFundMe campaign was started and raised $9,000 in six days, mainly from small individual donations to fund the fireworks, and the Elks Lodge came to the rescue of the social gathering and entertainment. Mr. Moderator, as Town Night is not on this list, does this mean that funds have already been found from sponsors, or that a Town Night Committee has been established to find such sponsors? And if not, why are we not appropriating funds for Town Night to maintain this Arlington tradition?
Mr. Chapdeline?
I did talk to him about it before, sorry.
Adam Chapdeline, Town Manager. So my understanding is that Town Day and Town Night have been supported by private fundraising for probably decades without town appropriation. For the first time, I believe, last year, if not last year, the year before, we asked for that $5,000 appropriation to help defray the costs of police details and DPW work for Town Day, to take a little bit of the private fundraising burden off of the Town Day Committee. Last year, the Town Day Committee took a vote, not based on financial resources, but based on their own volunteer time and capacity to focus on the feat that is Town Day, and not invest their time and resources in Town Night. So as you described, a GoFundMe campaign occurred and restored at least the fireworks portion and some portion of Town Night. I think going forward, I don't know this, but would imagine there could still be fundraisers. I think going forward, I don't know this, but would imagine there could still be fundraising capacity from some of those funders who support Town Day for Town Night, but I think it would be incumbent on, frankly, the group of interested citizens, working with the Board's office, on forming a new or cooperative Town Night Committee to see if the event could go forward.
Okay, so as we stand here today, there is no plan for Town Night, and no funds being appropriated forward, and no committee.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to discuss the article? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. The recommended vote of the FinCom is printed in their report. Press 1 for yes. If you're in favor, press 2 for no. Received. 187 in the affirmative, 4 in the negative. It's a positive vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 65, brings us to Article 71, Appropriation Post-Employment Benefits, OPEB Trust Fund. I went over my notes. Oh, it is. Okay, wait a second. Consent agenda, that's done. That brings us to Article 72. 72, I'm sorry. Overlay Reserve. We want to put $200,000 appropriate. Anyone who should discuss the article? Mr. Jamison.
Gordon Jamison, Precinct 12. So for informational purposes to the body, each year, the Finance Department and the Managers' Office determine how much tax, property tax, will be collected, and within that is an estimate of the new growth. Excess new growth goes into the overlay reserve surplus, along with appropriation every year, usually to $600,000 to $800,000. The overlay reserve takes care of abatements. Excess from that eventually funnels out into the town budgets. In previous years, each budget year had to have its own silo of money that went in and came out, making it very difficult to budget for that. And as I mentioned, when we get excess new growth, which we have over the last number of years, that money accumulates in there. With the Municipal Modernization Act, as I'm told by the Managers' Office, specifically Mr. Poehler, those funds can now be in one bucket, and so some of those monies we're taking out and putting in our piggy bank. 200 is sort of the normal number we take out, and the 2.5 is the larger number that's coming out. My question, perhaps to Mr. Poehler, is what is the residual budget in this account? And how do they think they're gonna manage it going forward?
Mr. Poehler? Correct me if I didn't describe that correctly.
Sandy Poehler, Deputy Town Manager. It was close enough for government work.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, no, it was accurate. I was looking for the exact number. I will, while I go through this, if I can find it right away, I will tell you, but as a general matter, here we have it. As printed, by the way, in the financial plan, which is on the website, on page 206, as of June 30th, 2018, the balance in the overlay account was $4,731,171. That was before taking out these monies tonight.
And before putting in new growth of 1.1 or 1.2 millions in December, right? For this year?
That is correct.
Okay, so we have about 2.5 million maybe left in that, and is that sort of the number you're thinking of keeping?
Yeah, I think for the short term. I think a lot of cities and towns are trying to figure out exactly how to deal with these new rules, but I think one of the things that we concluded with discussions with the long-term, long-range planning committee, is that the amount that was sitting in overlay was more than we needed, and that we could then move that out to be appropriated by town meeting into the override stabilization fund to then help reduce the size or need of future overrides.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to discuss Article 72? Seeing none, we're ready for a vote. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. Unanimous vote, 193 in the affirmative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 73, brings us to Article 75, Appropriation for Cannabis Mitigation Stabilization Fund, $1. Hope that's enough. Mr. Tosti.
Just a token of explanation. The Selectmen will be probably negotiating on this whole issue over the next year. It's been before this town meeting many times. This fund is just being established to receive money, which then could later on be utilized. In order to establish the fund, we need to put something in it, so we appropriated a dollar.
Anyone? All in favor of spending $1? Please press 1 for yes. 185 in the affirmative, 2 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends Article 75, brings us to our last article, 77, Appropriations Fiscal Stability Stabilization Fund. Anyone wish to discuss fiscal stability stabilization? Seeing none, I guess we're ready for a vote. All in favor, please press 1 for yes, 2 for no. 190 in the affirmative, 1 in the negative. It's a vote, and I so declare it. That ends that. Mr. Tosti? Yeah, we're all finished.
I move that this town meeting be dissolved.
All in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting of 2019, please say yes.
Yes!
Opposed? The meeting is dissolved. Turn your clickers in. Thank you very much. Great meeting. Thank you, everybody.